Um. Port Edwards Village Board to order um for October tenth. Uh, roll call.
Okay, trustee Grenden here. Trustee McGregor.
Here.
Trustee Moore here. Trustee Radke.
Here.
Trustee Saylor.
He is not going to.
Okay, and trustee Fertile.
Here.
Okay. So for the Pledge of Allegiance, um this past weekend was the Wisconsin Fire and EMS final alarm ceremony, which I attended. Um, and then, leading up to that, so this is Fire Prevention Week, and this Saturday, October fourteenth, is the Wisconsin Firefighters Memorial Day, so I would like the moment of silence after our Pledge of Allegiance to be an honor and Thanksgiving to all of our fallen firefighters and EMS personnel.
Hi.
Praise the Lord with the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
If I may, I would like to, uh, without objection, um, move item eight, A two, report from the airport manager, uh, after the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, I was gonna just move number four down after number eight, if that's okay. Essentially the same thing, is my note. Any objections to that? Hearing none, okay, so we will go to number five, motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Sir Flu, second by Grenden, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. Okay, any public comments on agenda items? No. If you have not signed in already, we do have a sign-in form, um, for the public, so just, if you can do that either right now or on the way out, that would be greatly appreciated. Okay, so for President's Report, um, I only have a couple things. A reminder about trunk or treats that we are doing here, um, October twenty fifth.
Which is a Wednesday.
Which is a Wednesday, thank you, I can remember the day. Um, we need, I talked to Ben Martinson today, we need a couple more trunks and able, so that we need that five um vehicle minimum, so if you are interested in doing that, that would be great. Um, just have to call the village office to sign up to participate in that. And then, trick-or-treating hours are October thirty first, five o'clock to seven o'clock. And, I got an email from Chief Warden today about, um, if any board member would like to be involved with their grant writing process that the fire department is going through, looking for some items, um, in that process, so if you would like to help out with that, uh, talk with Chief Warden after the meeting. Okay, that's all I have. Commissioner report, we will go to the Airport Commission, Mr. Sickler.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, the review proceedings from the, of the commission, we're just gonna all lump it into Jeremy's part, so this will be his quarterly update, which I think right now is kinda like a, uh, three-fourths quarterly update, personally, we've had in almost a year or so. I thank Jerry for take, Jeremy for taking out of his time, personal time to come over, so, take it away, Jeremy.
Okay. Uh, is there anybody here that doesn't recognize me? Did I, that was, okay, so, I guess introductions aren't necessary. Um, just a few of the, I guess, we'll start with the budget, one of the handouts that I gave you. Uh, that was just approved by the commission at the most recent commission meeting, which was October fifth. Um, the budget is pretty standard, there's not a whole lot that changes in it. The most, um, relevant thing to you folks would be, on the first page, the revenues, um, the municipal contributions from the different municipalities, I'm pretty sure you all understand how that works. Um, I keep the municipal contribution the same every year, so this is the seventh year that I've, the total municipal contribution is the same dollar amount, but what changes a little bit year after year, or year over year, is, it's based on the equalized values of the, of the four communities that support the airport, so you'll see the twenty twenty-three budget to the twenty twenty-four budget, there are a couple of, well, every, every municipality changed a little bit based on its percentage of the, um, the overall value of the, of the communities. Uh, UC Port Edwards went down just a little bit, Grand Rapids was the winner, they went up quite a bit, or, you know, percentage-wise, they went up, so. Um, other than that, revenues and expenses tend to be pretty stable at the airport. Not much changes, kind of have it dialed in, so first and foremost, I guess, is there any, uh, ideas or comments or questions about the budget for the year? This will be, I will officially release it here shortly, that the, you know, it'll be emailed to the clerks and the, and the town officials, basically, you know, town, the villages, city officials, respectively.
Any questions for Jeremy?
This was based off the equalized value for this past year?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's always calculated, the upcoming year's budget request is based on the previous years.
Change it next year.
Yeah, so next year, we'll see that. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And then, the other handout is just a little bit of activity information, um, some of the projects that we have ongoing, that we've completed. Again, I don't, I mean, I can, I can elaborate on any of them if you would like, the one that I'd like to point out in the planned projects were just in the, in the sculpting phase for an airport master plan, which used to only be necessary at larger airports where there was a lot more expected, uh, federal involvement, federal funding for projects. Uh, the FAA recently changed their philosophy, so that all airports need a master plan, in my opinion, it's a little bit costly and time-consuming for smaller airports, if you will, uh, like ours, as opposed to the ones that have certainly commercial, or, commercial activity, or some of the, some of the busier airports, but the FAA wants it, I guess what it does is it levels the playing field, so that every request that goes to the FAA comes through an airport's ma, it's, I guess, it's outlined in an airport's master plan, then the FAA is prioritizing funding based on how it's submitted and how it's prioritized in those master plans for its national plan for how to fund, uh, projects at airports. The good thing for us is that we've had the majority of our work that needed to be done out there has been done. This is the first year of the seven-ish years now that I've been here, that there hasn't been a major construction project out there, and it was actually kind of nice, so we're way ahead of, of, of most airports. Um, our, our long runway, the one that the jets take off, out and land, is getting to a critical point, it's, we've had some, some, um, Band-Aids put on it, but those Band-Aids are wearing off, so in three to seven years, when the funding comes available, that runway will probably have to be refurbished, and that will be outlined. That's one of the first informations we're gonna work, uh, we're going to work on it for the master plan, along with some potential, um, upgrades or modernizations for the existing terminal building that's there. So, but that's gonna be, s- two years at least, um, it's a lot of just paperwork, really, um, so again, uh, it, it positions us for requesting money from the FAA for future development projects, so. Other than that, if there's any on here that, that you've read that you'd like me to elaborate on, or, or give you some more details about, I'd be happy to do so.
Anything for Mr. Sickler?
So then, the next couple pages, the graph, and you can see our activity, well, um, kind of probably show this one, that you can see the light blue line is, is twenty twenty-three, the, uh, darker blue line is last year, and the, the yellow line is twenty twenty-one, so our activity, obviously, was, was way above what, what we've seen in the past, and our fuel sales, which is the one and only quantifiable metric aside from this, that we keep track of at the airport, our fuel sales for May, June, and July were the highest of that month ever since I've been here, those, the record-setting months, if you will. August was right up there, close, and now September is close again, um, October, uh, this Sunday's last day of Sand Valley's open, so we'll see a significant nose dive as our graph shows, along with our fuel sales as well, getting bundled up for winter. And then, the last page is just a picture of our, um, the new fuel system, it was, it was finally heated this spring, and then along, along the top there, you can see the year-over-year, just the past two years of, of total fuel sales, just to give you an, again, the one I mentioned, quantifiable metric that we have for activity out there, the fuel sales has been, uh, pretty good this year.
Anything else, any questions, comments? Hearing none, thank you for coming.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you folks again. Love to do this more regularly now.
Yeah.
I see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Okay.
Thanks again, Jerry.
Yeah, my pleasure, thank you.
So, we will go to number four, the DMI presentation with Joe Moore and Alex, I have no idea how to say their last name.
So, um, some of you know me, my name's Joe Moore, I've been here on this project since day one, um, and, um,
your phone.
So, uh, Alex is actually taking over my position, um, so Alex is gonna be spearheading the project up here. Um, we've been meeting with, I have been personally meeting with, uh, with Bob's for, I mean, the last six, eight months in the planning stages of our next phase, um, and now Alex has to execute it, for lack of better explanation, but um, we are starting demolition, and we got the word from the contractor yesterday, uh, who was on-site, as well as the environmental contractor, and we are starting anywhere between late March and mid-April, late April, depending on Wisconsin weather.
I could elaborate on that.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, uh, Joe and Dominga hired me on roughly ninety days ago.
Yeah.
Roughly, my ninety-day probation's over this year. Uh, they actually recruited me for my own construction company that I still own, I have my partner that runs it day-to-day, to come here to Wisconsin, do this project, that's why I'm hired. So, since I've been with the company, we've engaged with American Demolition, we've got their bidding updated. North Star, our environmental third-party watch company, will, is already back on with us, we had our meeting today, or, sorry, yesterday, on-site, reviewed everything, we know what we need to do to get our permits going, we've also engaged with Scott from Jewel to get all of our paperwork in order, so we can get all of our permits in order, so we can actually start them on April, outgoing weather-wise. And our goal for the site right now is to get this demolition project completed, period and a story, clean out the job sites, so that way, no more demo, and then we can think about the future. Uh, we've also been talking with Scott from, what's the company you're with?
Vandalaw.
Vandalaw, we've been having our regular meetings for the last one and a half now, so, and we've been talking to your village admin, I see you there, hi. Uh, since I got to the site forty-five days ago, I've got, and the site's cleanup effort started, as far as getting the debris cleaned up, getting cars that are, look like a junkyard moved out of our way, and getting it ready for demo to arrive, all of our heavy equipment to arrive, and getting our current heavy equipment that we have on-site, operational, and just getting the job site a roll ready for construction. We got a new sub-screening on the fencing, we also repaired the fencing that some trees took down, and we're actively getting the job site ready for winter, and getting it dry-able, walkable. I met with Ben today, Scott, and we showed him the progress we made so far in the last forty days, and we have a few more things we want to try to do before winter sets in, and we're just pushing stuff. Do you guys have any questions for us?
Um, I have a couple, I guess, you say that, you know, your goal is to complete, which is good news, we'd like to see that. Um, what's the goal on moving new heavy equipment in, is it yet this, this year, or are you gonna?
That'll come with the demo contractor. Our equipment on-site, we have two excavators, bobcats, and forklifts and stuff, we're getting all that operational, so we can do cleanup efforts, but the contractor will bring in all of this heavy equipment when he starts. Uh, they'll be pre-deployed, but it's a best-case scenario, end of March, he'll show up, depending on weather, but he'll be bringing all of this stuff, and we're looking at a six, seven-month timeline from start to finish with American Demo, they're based out of Chicago. Uh, reason we are talking to them is they've actually cleaned up seven other job sites, the other contractor that we hired before didn't complete in other parts of America, so he's very experienced in cleaning up bad demolition job sites. And he's been at the job site from beginning to current, he's visited multiple times, so he's familiar with every aspect of it.
But you know, you'll see, you'll see some heavy equipment moving around, because we have our own track codes on-site. So you'll be seeing them moving around and, and beginning to pull material into loadable piles, I guess, is a, lack of a better word, but, um, so you will, that's, uh, we have a maintenance guy on-site right now, who is, um, getting that equipment, we have it all running, we're just making sure it's, you know, going through all hoses, lines, those types of things, to make sure that it's gonna make it, um.
Through our maintenance.
Yeah, so, um, we've also, I kinda left this out, and I should have added this, in the last, um, twenty-four months, we have put over eight hundred thousand dollars in rail yard. Um, and I, I don't think many people realize that, um, but Volkman is on-site, we're on-site again this morning. We've identified some additional areas that are gonna be done yet this year, um, and then we are contractually, um, in, in agreement with them for the next five years of continuing that rail yard upgrade. Now, obviously, Volkman only does railroads, so, um, but we are committed to still Port Edwards, and we have put money on it in-site, on-site, in the last twenty-four months, but you know when we see that.
Like, the other thing is, I, you know, the timeline would probably bring us right to about this time next year for completion.
That is a goal.
A goal.
That is my goal.
And, I guess, um, also, what is the ultimate goal of that property, after?
Well, we met with, we met with Scott at Jewel yesterday, and we've asked him to start putting together the bid package that, post-demolition, will then talk about our, our surfacing, the new facade on the front of the building, the docks into that finishing area that we're keeping, so we'll be putting that out as demolition is starting, so he has about five months in which to put that bid package together, and then we will put that out to contractors for the next step.
Well, thanks for coming to the meeting and explaining, and.
The other thing that we may be coming back, and this is new to Dwayne, we talked a little bit later, Scott today, but uh, Jewel is doing the three-hundred-million-dollar casino project right now, um, that, uh, the feds have authorized, and, um, so we've had some discussion with them about the fifty-four connector, um, across the river, and, um, there are federal funds avai- available, uh, Jewel's getting more information on that for us, and so we'll probably, you know, obviously, we need a municipality to participate in that, so you'll be hearing about some of that discussion as well. Yes, I am.
American Demo, are they under contract right now?
They are not under contract, we have a meeting with Rob Sickler at the bank tomorrow to finalize that, and then they will be.
Okay, uh, any other questions that we could think of off the top of our heads?
Mr. Harrington.
Yeah, hi. First of all, I'm sorry I'm here a little bit late, it's totally my fault, I'm supposed to be telling them where to go, and I'm too busy looking at my phone, I'm going shipping this to turn, so, anyhow, I could have been here an hour ago.
It's always your fault.
It is, I take, I take complete blame for that, I apologize. Um, the only thing I just wanted to add is that, um, there's sort of like three basic permits that they had that lapsed, that there will need to renew to get the process started again, that they're fully aware of, and I just wanted to let you know, like, what's coming. One is with the DNR, one is with the state, and one is with you. You have, uh, a demolition ordinance in the Back Beer zoning code that was created before these guys even showed up in twenty thirteen. It was based on a model that the DNR put out, it's some frankly high-powered attorneys in, uh, the Milwaukee area that have dealt with closed manufacturing plants, and, uh, we're just reviewing it again, and it all seems to be up to snuff. So you have a very detailed demolition ordinance that, um, um, that trustee Radke would answer a lot of your questions, like, what comes next? Because there's a lot, and it's not just, what are we gonna do, what are we gonna do after that, how are we gonna do it? And so they're aware of that, they're working on updating that, we're thinking that that might be December, January, or whatever, come back to this board to approve that, so they can't get on-site until you approve that permit, and they can't get that permit without providing you a lot of information on what are they gonna do, when are they gonna do it, how are they gonna do it, what are they gonna do afterwards? And so, all of that will be coming to you. I've got, you know, an electronic copy of their supplemental back from twenty thirteen, fourteen, it's about this thick. Uh, I'm, um, I think I've already given a copy of it to Dwayne, but I'm happy to kind of get that to you, if you want to start looking through it, just have an idea of, because you can read your ordinance, but then you can kind of see, well, what actually got submitted? You know, a lot of that will need to be updated, but I would guess that probably eighty percent of it is gonna be pretty similar. So if you wanted to do your own head start, kind of homework on, what is this thing gonna look like, or whatever, uh, we can get that out to you. Uh, but look for an application to come to you, either right at the end of this year, or first part of next year, and just know that, uh, you know, that you will be able to review all that, ask a lot of detailed questions at that point, that they'll have answers with their contract will be, you know, on-board by that time, so you can get all the information you need at that point, so I just.
Yeah, there's, there's actually four permits, so, yeah, so there's DNR, which, um, Scott at Jewel has already been instruct, instructed to proceed post-ades, there is the, uh, first wall permit that has to be issued, which protects the wall at the dam site, um, which we've told him also to do post-ades, the second, um, phase.
What did you call that again?
For, because it's a federal.
Federal Energy Regulatory Commission.
Right.
They permit that it's, uh, belongs to DOMTAR, because it's, it was a requirement when the dams were put in, that the shoreline had to remain public access, and so it's got like a deed restriction on it, which everybody just refers to as the FERC restriction, and that's a federal agency.
Correct. Then the, the third piece would be the village permit, once the village permit is secured, then the state permit will come behind that, and that, pretty much the state permit is notification after you've approved your permit, so, two of those four are already been instructed to proceed post-ade.
Okay. Anything else? Do you two have anything else, or are you?
No, just, you know, um, we've been here since twenty thirteen, it's been a long, hard road for all of us, um, we appreciate your patience as, um, as much as, as anyone, um, a lot of it were, was unforeseen issues that have come in, come up. Nobody expected COVID, um, would certainly put us back a few years, and nobody expected a demolition contractor between contract and starting the work to go to South Africa and start running an operation that took them under. So, um, you know, and then we had the fight of our life, so, I can tell you, Dominga and I fought tooth and nail, we're not going anywhere, we're still here, um, there's, I fully recognize there's a lot of naysayers, but we haven't went anywhere. If we were gonna go somewhere, we'd have been gone a long time ago, so, we'll get this done, we'll make you proud, and, um, along the way, along the way, create a few jobs.
Dwayne, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't, and I'm glad that they came today, and came to the village, so they gave you an update of where their plans are. It's been a long time since, uh, you had good con- communications with them, so I appreciate that.
Our pleasure, it's been a pleasure working with Dwayne, too, so, once we, once we pointed each other to the files, right, Dwayne?
Okay.
All right, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Um, before you go, Joe, I would just like to, as a Port Edwards boy, for as long as I can remember, and my grandfather was instrumental in the early years of the old sawmill becoming a paper mill, um, I'm, I'm sure glad that, uh, that statue is gonna stay there.
Well, it never was gonna go anywhere.
Well, yeah, but what do you say to high school students when they think that would be a good project?
Yeah.
And I kind of got a little ecstatic at that age, I don't get ecstatic too much at the age of. He both is there.
Yep.
I mean, Mr. Edwards, that's, that's where it belongs, and I'm, I'm being serious, though, even though you and I used to joke around, we saw each other.
Yeah, I know.
I really appreciate that statue being there.
Yeah, well, and quite frankly, we're obligated to put his story on the side of that, so there will be a bronze plaque, um, on the side that the Historical Society has asked us to place.
You didn't reveal with Historical Society the threats I may deal with.
No. Well, there were some times I was called in a hysterical society, but we got through it, and there will be a history of Mr. Edwards and, and all the things that he did here.
But, thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Thank you, guys.
Absolutely, I'll be back up soon.
All right.
And if I don't get it, I'll make sure Alex stays here.
Yeah, yeah. My people will contact.
All right, you guys, good to see you.
Okay, moving on, Police and Fire Commission, I do not, do not get an update. That's where I'm at, there's no update, as of right now.
Excuse me, I did, do you have any questions for us, or anything while we're here that we?
Personally, I would just like to, uh, say two things, thank you for being here again, and it's, it's no secret that had Vandalaw and you, especially with that TIF knowledge, did not get re-involved here, we would not have had the meeting with them tonight. Probably shouldn't be so bluntly about it, but that's the facts, so thank you, guys, and, uh, Scott, uh, you're learning from one of the best, and I still would like to get Madam President, you together on some of those, uh, uh, funding projects out there for the towns five thousand and less, so maybe we can.
Yes, sir.
Hook you up.
No dither.
Well, happy to do it, really happy to be involved, you know, I've, I've been involved since two thousand nine, but, you know, uh, DOMTAR closed the mill in June of two thousand nine, Village hired us, October of two thousand nine, I'm on and off during that time, done things, and I've, you know, been really bound and determined to see something positive happen on the site, you know? We have the property owners that we do, you know, trying to make the best of it, I cautiously optimistic that they finally are in a position to move ahead, but we're gonna make sure that the demo permit is what it needs to be, and has all the right information in it, that we have some teeth to enforce it, and there's still rezoning and a plat, and a development agreement to come, so by the time you get that, we'll kind of have that scheduled laid out, just kind of waiting for them to firm their things up, and then we'll work backwards from there, so, um, I think we're making progress, um, as much as we can, that we don't own the property or control all that, but, um, we're here to help you and get that thing returned to some kind of productive use, uh, we're looking forward to that, so.
And I didn't say the kind words, because you bought me lunch with a help.
Yeah. You're cheap, Joe, I gotta say.
I was available for lunch.
I was gonna say, I didn't get any rest, but, yeah.
You were working Madam President.
I had a lunch half an hour.
I did, uh, I think Dwayne sent it to you, I sent kind of a detailed progress report with our invoice, so, did you all get that? Um, if not, let Dwayne know, he'll get it to you, but if, if that's too much, or it's not enough, I want to make sure that you all know what we're doing, and so I tried to put everything, you know, in there, and I will do that every month, but certainly, if there's any questions, you can email me, or, you know, have Dwayne, or, or Diane, you know, I'm, I'm in contact with both of them, probably, you know, at least once a week every other week, so, um, I, it's important that you all know what we're up to, not just, you know, paying the bill, but what you're getting for it, and if there's things we should be doing differently, or don't do that, but do this, you know, we're, we take direction from you, we don't decide on our own what we do. We make suggestions to Dwayne about what we could do and he's asked us to do some things, but we work at your pleasure.
Scott, I'll let you know, I'll begin contact with you. There's a couple of the trustees want me to talk to you about a few things. So I'll get in contact you.
Yeah, okay. Great.
Thank you.
So yeah, we're happy to hang around, but if you're done with us, we'll, we'll leave.
Yeah. Watch out for deer.
Money hit the bricks. We say that nicely.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Nice to meet you, Scott.
Take care.
Bye. Okay. Where was I?
I'll buy you lunch when you want to.
Police and Fire Commission, no report. Nipco Lake District. Mr. Howell, do you have something for us?
I think I'm going to be quicker. I have four things to share with you all of continued progress. And then one, I think joint opportunity that I'd like to offer. First of all, just a reminder that as of January 1st, eighty plus percent of the property on Nipco Lake will be part of Port Edwards. That's a really significant part. The rest is Saratoga and Grand Rapids. This summer, we completed our pilot of wheat harvesting. We took about forty acres out of four hundred ninety-six acres. We ended up taking eighty loads out of the lake. That represented approximately two hundred fifty thousand pounds of wheats. Now multiplying that to four ninety-two, I'm not sure we're going to be able to manage that with the equipment and so forth. Going forward, but we're going to continue to make progress on that. And most of the people that property owners have been very happy about that. I think the lake looks better than it has a long time. I've seen more people fishing lake this year than, than I have in the five years that I've been here. And I hope that continues to grow. Two, the aquatic plant study, which was a requirement for us, has been done on November 6th from five to seven PM. The woman, Sarah Hadley, who conducted that is, is required to have a public hearing. That's going to take place, assuming we can still use the space. Yeah, thank you. And so they'll be, and I'll make sure you get information about it. If you're interested, it's going to be a lot about what kind of plants are in the lake? What kinds of things we ought to be considering going forward? And that will then evolve into a major lake plan in January, February timeframe. And I think also you all will be really important to understand as well. But you're certainly invited. I will make sure you get notification of that November 6th meeting, if any of you would like to join. Third, on or about October 20th, end of next week, the Lake District will have its own website up and running. We're really happy that that's taking place. We can determine offline whether or not Port Edwards wants to continue to, to keep some contact on their website with the, with the Lake District or not. But nonetheless, we're shifting over. We really appreciated Tim's support in getting stuff on there. She does a great job of that and so forth. And, but we're going to be on, we're going to be on our own for that. Four, the lake fees that were approved by the property owners in, in our meeting in, in August have been sent to each of the municipalities. Those fees will be attached to the property owner's tax statements going forward. We got them in at the time requested and, and I haven't heard of any. Diane, maybe you may have had some, but I haven't heard of any questions coming back yet. And I think we, we got that settled pretty well. We appreciate the support of the municipalities as well. That was a big chore and really appreciate the support of the municipalities on that. Here's the ask. We had a boat tour with the DNR last week. We looked at the entire lake, looked at the algae, et cetera, et cetera, how we were doing, what, what needed to be done with that. Got some input in terms of how to look, how to think about that going forward. FYI, from my standpoint, while most lake districts wait years before they get into the watershed thing, it's very clear to me that if we're going to keep the lake maintained at a very high level, we've got to get upstream and start working with farmers and Lake Wajichia and others who are, what, what our lake depends upon in terms of getting water. But it also brings aquatic plants into the area as well. So we're going to move that forward much quicker than most lake districts do and start getting working on that so we can improve the water quality for the hundred, whatever, a hundred and thirty-six miles of, of the watershed as well. I think that's a big task, but we're going to jump into that. Here's the ask. As we were doing the boat tour, we went by the Port Edwards kayak launch. It's on the west side of County Z. And I asked my wife not to come tonight because she has tried to use that multiple times. And it is a huge challenge to even get your kayak from the water up to, up, up to the landing point. It's all rocks. It's very steep. They're very slippery and there's really, and no, and it's a very hard way to get a kayak in there. So in order to use it, I think there is a solution. And the solution could be that, and the DNR offered this, that if we, if, if port, since port gets Port Edwards, if Port Edwards would request a grant, we could develop a accessible piece of equipment that not only handicap people could use, but able-bodied people could actually use to use the launch going forward. So I'm here tonight to say if any, if you all would be interested, and I hope you would be, because that could be really useful for people who want to kayak. Please contact me. We'll, we'll, we'll pair up with somebody, write the grant and we can probably get the money to, to, to make that improvement. And so we really have a functioning kayak launch on, on the west side. Last thing I didn't mention was our, our harvesters are off the lake. Thanks to DNR, we also have a place on the far west side. You'll be interested to know that we got offered the old bomb launch to park the harvester for the winter. We've already improved property by re-putting the fence back up, making sure that the gate is actually functioning. And we're going to take some silt out of the water there to be able to move back and forth. I know this is a public meeting, but I'm going to say this anyway. I hope that's the start of something bigger in terms of the use of that space. But that's a conversation that's going to go on for at least a year or so going forward. But nonetheless, it's now starting to be used for, for something positive for, for the lake and hopefully for citizens as well. So that's what I have tonight. Questions? The watershed dilemma is going to be easier than the County Highway Z boat landing. Oh, oh, why? Yes, I'm aware of that. It, I, I think that that's true. And we'll just see how that plays out over time. I'm not I promise I'll stay away. Thank you. That was a request I wasn't going to do in public, but thank you for Brendan mentioning that. That's great. So anyway, thank you. Port Edwards has been a continuing great partner. As you can see, we're using less of Port Edwards stuff going forward. And I think what we're ending up with right now is still your, your, the opportunity to hold live meetings here, which we really appreciate. Other than that, we're flying on, on our own dime. And we really appreciate all the support for the last seven or eight months to get us to that position. Thank you.
Trustee, Zerflu, would you please make a note about talking about the kayak launch in your first work meeting?
A note for?
Like to put on your agenda?
What was that parts? I thought that would be about public safety because of that deep drop, you know?
Yeah, it could be a safety issue.
I think the president offered it to me.
Thank you for my, thank you for your opinion.
Yeah, I'll get it on.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Eighteenth? Yeah. Yeah, you move yours to the nineteenth. Eighteenth.
Anything else? Okay. We will go into Public Works Committee, Trustee.
Public Works met on September 20th. We had an update from Mr. Martenson about the projects. Everything seems to be coming to close. They have some fire, some fire hydrant painting that's been going on. And I can, you can see that they've been picking up leaves. If you've been seeing that they're picking up leaves around. Also, you'll see in human or FHR that we, I'll talk about that then. But kind of proposal for some road projects. And hopefully it will be less of a burden on the budget and the taxpayers in the next five years. I'll bring that up in FHR. Our next meeting will be October 19th at four o'clock here at Marshall Bueller Center. Other than that, I have nothing. And anybody have any questions?
Any questions? No? Okay. Thank you. Public Safety Committee.
Okay, we met on September 26th. Chief Warden gave an update on vehicles. The rescue truck was in the shop doing it due to a grinding noise. And I'm going to ask Chief Warden if you'd like to give us an update on the rescue truck status.
Sure, it's been fixed. It turned out to be the, the brakes. We had to replace some pads and rotors and even the front brake calipers. So that's all been fixed and it's functioning very well.
Thank you. Chief Warden met with the company that sells turnout gear and I was waiting for some quotes. Any update with this quote? Okay. Call volumes for them have dipped, but it's still on track with previous year. So just around the same. We did have a presentation by Todd Ekis. He was not the interim fire chief, but the fire chief of Wisconsin Rapids. And just talking about the contract with the ambulance service, which we will vote on later in tonight's meeting. Just, they just wanted to emphasize that all new townships contracted with Rapids are at the same rate. They cited just the increase in expenses with EMS services and COVID for the, due to the increase for the contract. And they will continue to train our first responders for free as they have in the past. So we'll go vote on that later tonight. We do have a motion on the table and I'd like to make that motion before us today. Let me get the exact wording. The motion is to refer the reviews of the Port Edwards Fire Department bylaws to a recommended five, five-person ad hoc committee.
Second.
Okay.
You made a motion too?
Yeah, I made.
Motion by McGregor, second by Brendan. Discussion. Mr. Zerflu.
If I can find it. Yeah. All right. Could you explain a little bit more detail what the intent of this motion is?
Well, our previous administrator had talked about pulling in all the parties all at once. But then what it turned out to be is everyone had their hands on it at separate times. And so the five, the five members would be myself, the administrator, Chief Warden, Scott Stewart, and somebody representing a village resident, also representing the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department. And that would be Dustin Lees, who has been contacted and has agreed to be on it. Those are the five members.
And you were in agreement with this?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just rolling with the process.
Now, is that a paid committee? Nope. Or is that just kind of a committee that's?
Uh, that's just ad hoc underneath of public safety.
Okay.
My other concern is, not concern, that's wrong word. Generally, stuff like this, I, I, I'm going to admit, I've had some pretty bad experiences over the years with ad hoc committees. However, the people that you said would be involved in this one, it's not a citizens per se group getting together, which is good thing. But I do have a concern that was any discussion had and since here as the chairman of the pit committee of, of running this through that committee, any of these bylaws? Because that is their
We did look at them at one point, but I think the goal of it is to like streamline it more. And it was like the whole big document coming in front of us. And then like not having a recollection, when did this change and when did that change? And utilizing everyone's time a little more efficiently to everybody at the table to make, you know, get it a little more streamlined as the goal. So Pitt did, did look at it, but it was really time intensive. And then going back and forth and back and forth where, am I stating that right? That's the goal, the?
Yes, the, the goal was that once it comes out of that committee, it could go right from fire department, public safety onto the board. We were, we were caught in a process.
It's going to go to the ad hoc committee, then to?
Yeah. Yeah.
You, did you say the fire department?
Yes. Department, the fire department, uh, public safety board.
Well, the bylaws originate there, right? And then it would go, wouldn't they be the first ones or there, no?
Who handles it in what order? Actually, I can't say for sure. But I can ask the administrator what, because he has dealt with this exact same thing before, so.
I think, well, my understanding is that the fire department has got to pass the bylaws on two-thirds vote.
Yes.
And that didn't happen before public safety saw them the last time. So the fire department's got to okay it essentially. Public safety would then okay and move it to the board.
To the board.
And can I ask a question?
Who?
So maybe it's more of a, not really a question, but a ask is, because I think this has been going around and around for quite some time. And my only fear is it goes to the ad hoc committee. They say, okay. You know, and then if it goes to the fire department and their pieces they don't like, then it goes back. It, it's just kind of ping ponging around. And so is this going to fix that? I guess is my question.
Yeah.
Because it's a lot of time and it's a lot of time without a solution for a lot of people.
I just can't wrap my head around why it, why it would go to a subcommittee and then the fire department when it originates in the fire department to begin with. Is it something that if something's changed along the way by the ad hoc committee recommendation?
Well, see, originally, the, the reason it was supposed to be the PFC, Public Safety or really pit. And what was the three pieces? That happened kind of, but it didn't happen as well as it was supposed to. Because nobody was in the same, at the same time was the problem. Yes.
And, and Joe, this is, this is the reason why I'm, I got a chance to look at the drafts that have been flying around for a period of time. I've seen how it's gone through different groups and different people. I believe that the fire department has done a lot of work on it already. So therefore, I'm, I was recommending to the chair of the public safety that we do the ad hoc. We will take what the fire department's already provided with us. They already have it. They've done a lot of work on it. We as a group will, will look at it over and make a recommendation to public safety. I will, I'll lean to the fire chief to give the information back to the fire department. Once the gets done with that, we get done with it, then I'll go to the public safety committee and then I'll go to the village board for final adoption. I under, I had a chance to look at it. It's all been done over the past, I don't know how many, like, like Jen's indicated that it's gone to different places and bounced around. I think it needs to be just taken the document that a lot of people in plane, excuse me, a lot of people have been working with it. And we need to just get into a document that covers ninety percent of what they drafted, but it's a lot of repeating. So I just think it should go to us, a committee which also public safety committee chair, excuse me, public some fire commission chairs may involve. I heard he had comments into it. I think it's best that we can get into a group, the working group and bang it out so we can get something done. It's been going around to me, it's been flying around to me committees in my mind.
What's the time? How much time do you think you guys are putting in in the ad hoc committee then?
We asked that question.
That was Jen. She asked, how much time do you think the ad hoc committee is going to put into working on these?
I mean, it's going to be based on how we can get Chief Warden involved with us. He works full-time. I was looking at a Thursday late afternoon to get him to be participated. It's very important he participates in it. So his timeline is where we're going to draft it around. And a lot of the documentation's been in place. So I don't think it's going to, we'll have to take us, I might, I might, I'm going to take us maybe four. And a lot of the documentation's been in place, so I don't think it's gonna, we'll have to take us, I might, I might, I'm gonna take us maybe four meetings or five as a group. To just, but a main thing is having us all meet at one time, so we got the heads of all the people working on it, discussion one time.
I guess. Would for thought, that's a lot of extra, we're asking people for a lot of extra time to do something that they've already spent a lot of time on. So, wh- and I don't know how to fix that, but I. We've got to work on efficiency in the future.
That's why I'm making this recommendation to the chief and also to the public safety chair, because I have seen. Lot of meetings, lot of discussion, I've seen the documents, they need to be pulled together by a group and get it, get it done.
Anything else? Mr. Zirklo, you're still.
And everyone that's included in that is fine with it being unpaid?
I don't think it should be unpaid. We can't ask somebody generally do not pay. Oh, really? I didn't realize that.
I think that was the hiccup was. Fire department had it, it got kicked to a committee and then their changes were in one color and then it was to the P F C, which was another color. The administrator had it, it just kept circling. So I think having everybody at one table. Looking at it at the same time is gonna be helpful.
I really, I really would like to see it. End up like it's intended, you know, and I respect the way in an awful lot, known him for years, but uh. I don't know, I just don't think the addition of that extra. Group is going to uh. Make, I think we're gonna end up. With a different way to get to the same results usually, your different colored pens and stuff. I'm, I don't know, I just.
We're two years late.
All I can tell you, if it's gonna be unpaid, I'll be, I'll be volunteering my time and someone else, we're gonna try to crank this out as soon as possible.
Well, that's what we like to hear.
Just think it's a lot to ask people, four or five meetings.
Well, I guess, I just have a question, like, these bylaws. How long have they been in place? And I mean, when's the last time there was actually bylaws that were? Set?
That's the problem, uh, trustee Rakhi. I looked at them, they have been, I got some old ones and these bylaws, they haven't been done for a long time. So that's why there's a lot of things put into it. A lot of people said their direction that. I'll be very honest with you, I've looked at them, they're very lengthy compared to they had in the past. I've done bylaws before, you need to cut to the chase and get some bylaws out of, out of place. This, these bylaws have been. I'm, I'm, I just don't, they're just full of a lot of stuff that you don't need to have in there. If you got a chance, look at them and study them over. There's been a lot of people putting documents in it.
I call the vote. Anybody have anything else? Okay. With that, the motion on the table is. To refer the reviews of the P E F D bylaws to a recommended five person ad hoc committee. The motion was by McGregor, second by the. By Brendan. All in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Boom.
Opposed? Okay. That one.
Pass this, I had to count. I totally had to count, I was leading myself on it, okay. So the only passes, so. Dwayne and. Yeah, I don't know that. Okay. What else out of public safety committee?
Um, we did uh move the operating budget for the fire department to F H R. Committee of the whole, whoever wants to pick it up, so. Uh, but we did move that on. We are still working with the police department, that's what we'll fo- focus on the next meeting. Um. With. Uh, police, uh, I think if you've been to the homecoming parade, we saw the new squad in the parade. I didn't recognize until it went by, I was like, oh, that was it. Uh, but it was there. Um, there you go, oh. Uh, let's see here. That's important. Chief Drew wanted to emphasize that the school year got off to a bad start and. The minutes here state the school has had several situations involving the police this year, which reinforces the idea of looking for funding for an S R O. They've had quite a turbulent couple of weeks already. Um, we did talk about. The apartment's fourth full-time officer, uh, school resource officer. Um, and we'll continue to talk about that. Uh, Chief Drew is working with the school to review funding options. Grants are also being looked at through legacy, um, et cetera. Police coverage at Nepco Lake. Um. Chief doesn't see Nepco Lake bringing in a huge influx of police calls, it's a safe area. Um, there'll be some property checks. They are currently having a combined dispatch between themselves and uh Wood County Dispatch over there. Um, and. And so we, we would just time out what's gonna change within that. Major problem is simply the time to get there and the extra mileage it costs. Um, and then we'll continue to talk about their budget. And our next meeting is November second at five P M.
I did have a question, Caleb.
Yeah.
Um, now that the new squad car is up and running, is the old one out for bid? Or did we vote on keeping another car? Or is that just something that was automatic?
Well, let me see here. What?
Remember, it was a thunder, thunder with a gallop.
Uh, let's see here, squad one was damaged, a taillight needs to be replaced, the estimate to repair may be more than the value of the squad. Open to fix the taillight and keep, it said.
So we're gonna keep a car that smashed up?
We haven't voted on it.
We, we, that was just in his report.
Okay. I don't know if you've seen the old one, there's quite a big, the whole backend is. Crunched.
Well, it needs a new taillight.
Well, I mean. Okay. I guess my, my opinion would be that it goes up and we see what we can get for the car and put it back into the fund.
Oh, yeah, I'll move that on to.
No. But I guess I don't know if we have to vote on that or if that's just an automatic thing that we, we keep it or when we get rid of equipment, do we keep two?
Hold on, Joe's snacking. I was waiting, I was looking at him for a.
My football shopper. We, uh, it, it's pretty much the board, if the chief decided not to, he wanted to keep it. He's within his area, but that certainly is a subject where if one trustee wanted to bring it to a vote of the board, we're the final authority. We never bothered it in the past, you know, and we went from one car to two cars, the board just kind of left it up to the. You know, Lon was, did the ordering of cars for me and for their department because he knows more about that stuff. But yeah, that could be, yeah, if the board says no, we're gonna sell it because it's really property, it'll be sold, so.
So I'm just thinking there's another insurance, there's gas, there's maintenance, there's all sorts of hidden costs with keeping another vehicle, so.
Yeah. On the, on the question of insurance, a few years back, we had the same issue and I was asking that. And I thought that you told me, Joe, that it was a. Kind of a non-issue that because we have a fleet vehicle policy, do you remember anything like that?
Uh, being bluntly honest, no, but.
Diane, do you know? So that might be a piece of information that would be helpful, what would be the cost of holding on to it? As opposed to getting rid of it?
Fleet meaning all village vehicles.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, you know, and that's can be looked at. I know that there's gonna be other costs, uh, if you keep a, an extra computer in there. You keep other equipment in there, the equipment, if you looked at the last squad, the equipment was almost as much as the squad was. So you have other equipment in there that could have been transferred, radios and things like that.
I might be wrong, but maybe because they're different model of vehicles, does, did that play into that? So.
Cause the original, it was supposed to, they wanted to take the radio and everything or whatever else.
I think at the end of the day, it might be more valuable to keep it than get rid of it. To have a vehicle and then ride it until there's no, you know, until there's expensive, because it's not nickel and diming us.
Well.
We have a car accident and one squad gets totaled.
Okay, it is on public safety.
We will, yeah, we will, I will talk about it at the next meeting, right after moving the John Edwards statue to my front yard, so.
Okay, anything else on public safety? Before we start a riot across the table?
I'm tired to riot.
Okay, trustee or chairman Zirklo, Parks and Recreation Committee, sir.
Yeah, um. I'm sure everybody's read the minutes, there's just uh items, uh, eight, nine and ten, or eight and nine. Um, I would like to take my hat off to Ben. He and I had a discussion when uh. Way at the start, when I became chairman of the committee, it asked him to separate things from public works, cause it's too, you know. And Rakhi and I don't get along anyway, so I want to protect.
Noted for next meeting.
Thank you, man.
Jen in the middle.
Yeah. It's uh, he, he's doing, he's doing a really good job in that regard and uh, he's, he's keeping things separate from the uh. Pete, you know, public works and in the village or the parks. The other thing is, is I would just like to, I would uh, made my official. Uh, request from Lon to put the uh item number five on my minutes, committee chairperson's comments. Uh, Zerflu states, the person taking minutes should be paid an extra ten dollars to do the minutes. And this includes whoever takes the minutes for all the committees, you know, in, including the board. And even though in two of the cases, uh, a salaried person is doing them, they still entail time. And the, the work that Jen put into these minutes, and I'm, I'm being serious here, I mean, it's. Better than I could have done. And, and your attention to detail, I just think it's a little way to say, hey, thanks, we appreciate it. And six hundred dollars extra a year is not gonna hurt us at all. And that way we know who's taking them, so.
Can we keep the extra squad?
Pardon?
Oh, my gosh. Did you see it?
On the extra squad, if I might answer that question, I, I prefer because of my past experience or work. Load, my job was as a chief, so I'm like, I'm just leaving it up to Scott anyway. I mean, if he thinks it's a piece of crap, he's gonna tell you to get rid of it. But anyway. Um, I, I just would like and hope everybody can support that uh coming up. Or the people on F H R could support that to, so we could get it to the board. It's just, you know, we do that at the county, they get fifteen dollars a month or the time they take them. Uh, I'm not saying for that, but ten dollars, I mean, come on.
At home, and then would you, so here's a question for you, would you, whoever does the meeting does this? Cause I think that's what you said to whoever has to do this, or can I just rely on me, that's fine. But there's many meetings coming up where I'm not here to do it. The computer, like, setting up the Zoom and making sure that's downloaded and all that.
I really didn't give consideration to that, but that's. We did win.
I thought we did.
The Zoom operator should get fifteen dollars too.
It's ten dollars, anyway, okay.
Just for F H R's food for stuff.
Maybe this too, maybe not, that's fine.
Yeah, we have to be careful, the only thing we have to be careful of is, is trustee salary, right Diane? Because that's got regulations as to when you can get a. You know, like, uh, if we went from twenty-five to thirty dollars a, a meeting, one side of the table gets it one year and then the next year.
Go down a raise, yeah, the next, the ones in April would get it and the other ones won't get it till.
But I feel like this wouldn't be involved in that at all.
Sure.
So I, I just wanted to point that out and um. I will make a motion to uh, I don't know, we already, yeah. We did that, never mind.
What are we doing?
Uh, new business, Don Tarr has reached out to the village, Don Tarr would like to uh zone the area where the John Edwards statue is. So they can keep the statue on Don Tarr property. I would, just can't goosebumps.
What, where do you have? Are you still waiting first?
Uh, number uh, blah, 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 blah.
What about F H R and Pitt and?
He's still in his minute, he's in his minute.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay.
He's in charge, I'm sorry.
It's all right, it's all right, Sharon, I understand.
Sorry, you really confused me.
I confused everybody. Um, unless you have any questions, you've all read through this stuff, uh. Our next meeting will be October eighteenth at five o'clock, right Jen?
Yes.
You could change that, remember, I won't be there, that's. It's parent teacher conferences, so I won't be there. Remember, I emailed you about that, so if you wanna do it at whatever time.
Let's leave it on the eighteenth at five o'clock.
Okay.
And madam president, you will be there for sure that meeting, you changed your, you will be a holding member that night, so. All right, before I forget what my name is, I'm done.
Okay. We didn't have a meeting, no chairman comments, Lon?
Okay.
Moving on to Chairman Radke. Sir.
Woo, okay. Um. Well, Finance and Human Resources met October fifth, here at the Marshall Bueller Center. Um. Comments, uh, trustee Zerflu, we will put that on about the, on our next meeting for the ten dollars for minutes, good idea. Um, I think the budget's gonna be tight, that's the only other comments I have. I think you all got the email from.
Thanks, Paul.
From Dwayne. Um. First thing I have is a motion to approve the estimated TIF expenditures for road projects through two thousand twenty-nine.
Second.
Second by.
Okay, so Radke made the motion, Brendan, second, discussion.
Yes, I think pretty much everybody's aware of, maybe Jen, I think you might not have been in.
I'm aware.
You are aware?
Oh, yes.
Okay, it's using the TIF dollars and it carries us through a street project that we wanna do. Um, we wanna have it done by September because our TIF runs out. And this will take care of Second Street, which is gonna be a big, huge savings for the, the tax dollar, uh, taxpayers for this road expenditure.
Okay, any questions on that?
Trustee Moore, will that use up kind of the rest of the TIF dollars?
We'll actually have um about four hundred. And fifty thousand dollars extra after it.
Okay. I just want to say that.
That's an estimate.
Cause that two hundred thousand, I think we'll be getting more each year than that, but we can't count it, you know, rather figure low than high.
Okay.
I just wanted to know as we were moving forward, if other TIF projects came up, kind of where we're at, but we're healthy, thank you.
Yeah.
And this is supposed to cover a hundred percent of these projects as proposed?
Correct, all the way through, cause we keep on getting TIF dollars, but we have to have that plan in place by September of next year.
They did and all of that kind of planned and.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for that word. Okay. Go ahead, Dwayne.
Um, Johnny has a good comment is that what's possibly left and, and Diane's given an estimate on it. The key thing is, if the, if they make this decision by a certain date, I think it's September twenty twenty-four. Diane, that's correct, we can, we can lend the last expenditures on it?
Uh huh.
Yeah, so the thing is, if you think you're gonna project or know that you may have a surplus afterwards. You need to make a decision on before that date if you wanna use that surplus, otherwise if that surplus, and it's an estimate, like she said, and she's conservative. If that surplus, if you don't use it, just stay in that TIF fund. And then when you close it down, it could distribute between all the resting tax agencies, such as the school district, county, yourself. And M, and your tech school. Just wanted you to know that, because sometimes some people wanna make sure there's some leftover. Also, I've seen community members wanna make sure that they take the best use of that. If there is. Dollars that you can use for, like, for example, you still have your. Uh, your, your, the program where you help people out in the district area, you can set to the side for that portion. You also listen to D M I coming there and they, they, they got a big pie in the sky. But just wanted you to know, when you get done with the certain, you're doing a good chunk right now and you're earmarking it, and you'll have it in place by the end of the span of your period. Thank you.
Thanks, uh, so if that four hundred and fifty K, if we don't have a spot for it to go September twenty ninth of next year. It goes back to municipalities at the end of the five years?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
A portion.
Well, it gets split between everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll reread the motion, to approve the estimated TIF expenditures for proposed road projects through 2029. Motion made by Radke, second, Brendan. I will call, vote, all in favor for this, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That one carries.
Okay, the next motion is to approve the garbage collection fee of $186.32 for the year 24 and 25.
Did you make the motion?
I will make the motion.
Sorry.
Motion by Radke, second by Zerflu, discussion.
This will be put on, not on the tax bill, but it's a separate bill on your taxes, it's kind of like, yeah, well, yeah, you know, it's your taxes.
How you doing, Jen?
It's just like the hydrant fee or something on there. Another way to say that you're not paying much taxes, but you are.
It's not in your taxes, but it's on the tax bill.
That's correct.
Any questions or further discussion on that issue? Okay, hearing none, all in favor for passing the motion, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That one carries.
Okay, and the next motion I have is to approve a four-year contract to renew with Wisconsin Rapids Ambulance Service at the capital rate of $25 per capital for 2024 and 25. And then $26 cap per capitals in '26 and '27. And I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Motion by Radke, second by McGregor. Discussion, I'm just going to say that I'm not going to discuss it or vote on it because Josh works for Wisconsin Rapids Ambulance now.
So what?
Because Josh works for Wisconsin Rapids Ambulance.
Can you get us a discount?
Can maybe get us a discount, I'm not sure about.
We're not gonna, what?
I'm not going to discuss. I'm going to, yes.
Just to let you know that, you know, the ambulance service, they do a great job, but it's going up, and it's not going up lately. It's gonna be, it's gonna hit our pocketbooks about $27,000, I think I figured it out. So it's, you know, with everything else that's going, just, I know it's necessary that we have it, and it's necessary for our residents to have it. But we have to be conscious for this, and when I bring up other things about keeping equipment and whatnot, every time that we keep doing this, we, we also have a lot of increases. So with that, um, I think that the Rapids Ambulance Service is excellent, I've seen them work, I've worked with them. I, like I said, I made the motion, so.
I think, I think Caleb did emphasize it, I'm not sure, or if I'm just remembering it from the meeting, but the emphasis that we're going up the same rate as the other municipalities they're serving, and it's basically recovering their increased cost.
Anything else? Discussion questions? Hearing none. Motion being by Radke, second by McGregor, all in favor? Any opposed?
Our next meeting will be, oh, I got it here.
November 2nd at 4 o'clock.
That's correct.
Hold on, when was it?
November 2nd at 4 o'clock.
More than a pretty face. Random woman. Caleb, I see that.
Okay, any, number nine, any unfinished business from previous meetings?
I guess, I, I've just, you know, I I'll express it one last time, I mean, I have no.
You promise?
Yes, I promise, but you know, if you look, I've talked to Sheik Chief Drew, he said the damage was $7,000 some odd dollars worth. That's more than a taillight. And if we get in the business of keeping old equipment, then we need to, you know, it's like if we start keeping old leaf suckers, because we want two of them. Well, it's, it's double the cost. I would ask that it goes to the board as a vote, if we keep another car, I just feel that this was kind of just thrown on us. What, and the only reason I say that is past experience, we always had a trade-in value of that car before we got a new one. And we've always, the only thing I've gotten is all, a bid on the internet, it might be 5,000, it might be 4,000, it might be 6,000. There was no, no bid, and I know that you won't give you the quote exactly what the car is gonna, they'll give you. So if we want to keep another car or another piece of equipment, I think it needs to go to the whole board as a vote, and we decide on it. There's just other hidden costs. I'm also looking at, um, again, you know, you say, well, you know, the last vote here, it's just the cost of business. Well, yeah, Rapids is gonna give us cost of business. Well, Port Edwards has got to look at the cost of business, too. And I know that fire contracts are coming up, um, I think Dwayne is probably working on them, but we're gonna have to probably look at those, and it's the cost of business for other communities that we're providing fire protection to. Our fire department does a great job providing these protections to other communities. So that's all I have. End it there.
Are we under trustee comments?
Oh, I thought it was, I thought it was old business.
It was unfinished business.
I kind of thought that was still on.
Okay, new business. Miss Moore.
Oh, Miss Moore. Um, I know we're talking about not having funds, and I 100% get that, but um, something, and I know trustee Radke, um, and I briefly had a conversation about this at one point. Because I had questions about kind of how this works, but anyways, um, without having a full-time administrator, I think I, I questioned how much extra work Diane had to take on, and I think Ben's taken on some extra work as well, and so I'm just wondering if that kind of needs to be discussed, people are taking on extra work, they should be compensated.
Can I answer?
Yeah.
I actually brought that up at our FHR meeting, for things to put on in the agenda. And, yeah, and Diane shut it down, because we had money in there for bonuses, $7,500.
That's not necessary.
But the $7,500 is already figured into some of the shortfall that we have. So she actually took that out of there to try to make the budget, and we're still about $300,000 short. So she kind of said, well, yeah, we don't have the money in there for the bonuses, so I guess we'll have to talk about that during wages.
Be really, really nice and buy her lunch.
Get the minutes on time.
Get the minutes on time, yes. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Report from the village administrator, Dwayne, what do you have for us, if anything?
Dwayne?
Yes, my mic was off, sorry. Yes, I do have it, and it's important to realize that Diane has plugged the numbers in for next year's budget. Um, she plugged in numbers, and you gotta realize, she plugged in numbers that the departments wish for or want. And then we have to take a look at the real needs are for the community, so that's gonna be hard not to go through. Um, I think, uh, she does, she did have the police department's numbers, even though it hasn't gone through committee yet, so I wanted you to be aware of that. I think Jen asked that question, too. And what I'm trying to say is you also have, um, outside contracts, which we need to find out what's gonna happen for our contracts portion of it, too, and that includes the fire protection for our other agencies that we have contracts with. The bottom line, though, is I think Ben made a comment in one of his emails that there is an item that, and it's been discussed, you folks have been doing it, instead of using some funds in your general fund that was budgeted for in 2023, you are now, you've used some funds out of, out of the TIF area, which would, which those dollars would revert back into your general fund at the end of the year. And that'd be, he said roughly $100,000, so that's a very important number that you see, which would really, I mean, when Diane puts numbers together, that's gonna help a lot. Because though she'll see those as come numbers coming in, not being expenditure, which I don't think she had in mind at first, so less than less, Diane's way ahead of me, and she's already kind of counted that, and that's up, and Diane's gonna let us know, thank you.
Okay. Uh, report from Clerk Treasure. Nothing. Okay, now we are onto trustee comments. Trustees Zerflu.
Back to the squad car. If you keep it, make sure it's fixed. Okay, because you can't keep a squad car that is not fixed as it should be, right? So you're talking about $7,000, if you want to keep it, you better fix it. This is the first time, I don't care if it's, leave the homecoming for it, something happens, and you knew that was not up to 100% maintenance, you're a lawsuit. So you want to keep it, fix it, and that does take board action. So if you don't want to keep it, and you want to trade it in, don't fix it. Get rid of it.
Okay. Good, any other trustee comments? And committee calendars. Okay, Public Works, October 19th at 4 o'clock.
Correct.
Public Safety, November 2nd at 5 o'clock. Yeah, I was just looking for an acknowledgement. Parks and Rec, October 18th at 5 o'clock.
Correct.
FHR, November 2nd at 4 o'clock.
Correct.
Okay, so for your awareness, November 2nd, I am not going to be here, so someone's just gonna have to do the fix.
At some point in time, I thought there was a meeting on the 19th of October, is it?
Public Works, the 19th.
I won't be there.
Okay, so we do need. I, I emailed you all to bring dates that would work for Committee of the Whole.
And Pitt is at 5 o'clock and 30th.
There.
Without Jen being here, reference Parks on the 18th.
19?
Could you make a 4 o'clock meeting?
Sure can.
And I'm sure Eric can have no problem with that.
I cannot speak for him, but.
Oh, yeah, let's, let's move it up to 4 o'clock, is that okay, trustee?
I told you to do that, and then you told me no.
Okay, back to the Committee of the Whole, trying to schedule that. Okay, so I am not available for a couple days in November. So Joe, can you kind of refresh my memory, how did, when it came to budget stuff, when did we have the Committee of the Whole? Because there's some bigger ticket items that we should probably discuss before getting too far into this budget.
The only Committee of the Whole of any importance is the one that we make sure all our Xs and Os are there for like a week before the December board meeting. Wasn't that about it?
Well, the public hearing notice has to be published the middle of November, and our numbers have to be pretty accurate. We can change them a little bit, but not a lot, towards we ever go through the whole thing again. So they should be pretty much set by the middle of November.
By the 1th of November, yeah. I remember my many years here, there's just a couple items at all, and that was because something came up that we needed money.
So would the recommend, like, would you all feel comfortable having a Committee of the Whole things to discuss about those bigger budget items the village administrator pay, or what are your feelings on that, that we're all at the table for those bigger? What are we gonna do with the village administrator? I would, I would hope that Dwayne can kind of give us an assessment of what we need by then, so that we can maybe have that discussion as a whole versus just FHR and then kicking it around.
When is the hearing have to go, Diane?
Right around the 18th of November.
I would recommend the Committee of the Whole, uh, not more than two or three days after the November board meeting. Because now all attention's on the end of the year, you know?
I'm just gonna be, I'm gonna be out the whole week of Thanksgiving, so that's about a week.
Oh, okay.
Well, the board meeting, the next one is in November.
Yeah, that's why I said, you know.
So it's gotta be.
Or even the next week, like.
Latest, so.
Have it on the 21st, you know, but that's about as late as you're gonna want to do it.
She said it's gotta be the 15th at the latest.
So could we do November 9th or 10th?
Before the board reading?
Before the board meeting, because then Dwayne is here on Thursday, Friday.
Yeah, I, Diane's the one that you gotta, because what dates, she knows all that, when would be the best time to do it?
So now I'm asking all of you, 9th or 10th, does that work for you?
That does not work for me.
The 9th and the 10th?
No. The 5th through the 11th doesn't work.
What? The what, the 5th or the 11th?
Yeah. I don't know if the 13th or the 15th works. It's getting late.
Because I can't do the first to the fifth.
The first to the fifth?
Right.
How long, how long of a meeting do you think it'll be?
It can be, we've, I've had some where it was probably a little over two hours, and then you had some where it was just all soaked up and dry.
Because there's some bigger things, I think it might take a little bit.
If we're gonna talk about damaged squad cars.
Yeah. We won't talk about that.
So do we?
October 30th?
October 30th, uh, there's pit meeting at 5.
After the pit meeting?
Can we do it after the pit meeting, say, how long do you think the pit meeting's gonna go?
Three meetings in one night.
The 30th?
30th, why?
Whoops, hold on, I'm sorry, what am I thinking?
You were thinking the second.
Do you want Dwayne to be there? Oh, the second has multiple meetings?
Okay, I mean, I would.
We could move pit meeting to four. I can't.
So.
If we do it on the 30th, we could, you know, Dwayne could give us his recommendations as far as what he thinks.
30th is actually a Wednesday, I believe.
No, 30th is a Monday.
Well, don't listen to me.
That, that is a meeting, Dwayne, that's the one meeting as a past president that I, it's, I, I personally feel is very important that the administrator be here for that meeting.
Two, and I think, yeah, I know you can't do the 9th, I heard, I know it's gonna be before the 14th or 15th. And the other one, I, I know you got FHR sitting on the second, and I think that if that's, you can use that, FHR, I mean, make that to me as a whole.
Not gonna be here.
What about?
The 26th? How about the 26th?
October 26th?
Dwayne would be here.
There's no school that day, so it's no fault in our world.
Um, the issue is, we may not have any school answer on SRO at all.
I don't think I'll be here.
26th.
November 11th, Saturday, 10 o'clock, have a carry-in, I mean, if we're just bouncing around on a Saturday, come in and have your meeting.
I think that's a good idea.
November 11th?
I don't get back until late.
Till when? Eight?
Late.
Late?
I would recommend you stay with the 30th, Ben, and I can make comment, I can, 30th, I do not think I have a meeting that night, so I can be by Zoom and also make comments ahead of time with Diane.
Alright.
Okay, the 30th, so October 30th.
Started early.
Pit's at 5. Can we do 5:30 for Committee of the Whole, is that enough time for?
I don't know anything that's on the agenda, Dan.
Well, the mission coffee will be on there.
Can you move the date of the meeting? Again?
This is gonna be the biggest deliberation of our night, guys.
It's just the number of people in the halls.
Here, can we do the 26th for you on October 26th?
She's not here, I think.
Yeah, I wasn't gonna be in town.
Okay.
If we do the 30th, could we start the Committee of the Whole at 3 o'clock and?
Not for Jen, no?
Oh, Jen. I just thought of something, no, I can do the 26th. Let's do the 26th. Yeah.
For Committee of the Whole.
Committee of the Whole.
Because then Dwayne will be here. Yeah, problem solved.
You can argue football.
What time?
That's not what we're doing.
October 26th. So Jen, there's no school that day?
I can be here at 4.
3 o'clock.
I actually, well, it's.
You're not doing anything but walking jack at 3 o'clock if you still have your same routine.
No, it's, I mean, we slept, we're still 3:45.
You do, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, I, that's.
Yeah. I have.
4 o'clock?
It's professional development, I can be here at 4.
4, okay, October, holy cow, October 26th, 4 o'clock, Committee of the Whole.
Who had that idea?
I don't know, it's passed around so many times, I don't.
Here, I think here, I seen something about the 26th, and then Dwayne said something.
Who knows, okay, moving on, okay, I will.
It'll be in the minutes.
It'll be in the minutes, I will do the meeting, the calendars, probably tomorrow, because I have a damn much new firmware. Uh, but I will get that out shortly, anything else from anybody? If not, without objection, I call meeting, or adjourned at 8:31. Fabulous.